Ready by my clock, so we're gonna go. It's April sixteenth and it is a regular meeting of the City Plan Commission and call us need to work. Let's stand and recite the pledge of allegiance, please. Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, united, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. John, would you call roll, please?
Tom?
Here.
Kevin?
Here.
Glenn?
Here.
Bruce?
Here.
Roy?
Here.
John?
Here.
Blake?
Here.
Okay, we have a full board tonight and the minutes were sent to you via email. There is also a copy sitting in front of in your place there. You had a chance to read and review the minutes. Are there any corrections or additions? Accept the motion for approval yesterday? All in favor? Aye. Okay, thank you. We have a couple items of business, or at least we have a couple agenda items, is really no official business that we have to take care of tonight in a sense of making determination about the Plan Commission action. But there were a couple of things that have been kind of on our plate for a while that we from time to time bring up and I thought it'd be appropriate for us to take a look at that. And one is the reported status of unsafe buildings, which we've asked Gary to repair once we've beat. And so, Gary, do you want to just go through the list here or present?
Basically, we've notified a couple people that they had issues. We haven't heard back from them pretty much. The one down by five points with the broken window, somebody whoever had the lease there, leased that to somebody else without the owner's permission and they're trying to get them out before they fix the window there. Most everything else has been addressed. And then the last one is the one on East North, which Chris could give an update on.
Yeah. The Wilson property, we went through a public hearing, the March Works Meeting, and they authorized a demolition order. Subsequent to the authorization of the demolition order, I found out that the property had actually been sold at a tax sale. I've been contacting the owners, the purchasers, counsel from the tax sale. It's Wayne Greason's firm out of Connersville, representing the LLC that purchased the property at a tax sale. Their inclination is if the property is in any way salvageable, they would pay the city what it's owed and salvage the property. If it is not, then they will bow out of their leaning and allow us to proceed forward with the demolition order that's been previously approved. I have contacted their representative, Troy Tarpin, who would like to visit, physically visit the site because they bought it basically sight unseen. And I have been working to schedule that with the city engineering and the fire chief so that they can see and make a decision as to what they want to do. And hopefully, they're going to do that site visit sometime next week.
So, what you're saying is, once they look at it, if they determine that indeed they want to keep it, then they are going to repair the building to make it livable?
That's my understanding, yes.
Okey doke. If not, they're going to tell the county that they're not going to come through with their purchase agreement?
Correct, yeah, they will back out of their tax selling and allow the city to proceed forward as we have previously acknowledged.
Members have any questions of Gary or items here on the list?
If I may get back to the House there by five points. I've forgotten to mention when we brought that property to attention before, that was also one of the properties that the city maintained last year as far as keeping the lawn all that day. So, and they're meant like if the city itself may have a leaning against that property.
We do have leans, yes. When we do that, we file things.
You know, this thing was brought up back in, when was it here? January. And it's, you know, four months later and they're still not, the window's still broken, still the same situation as it was. It seems like, I mean, I know we have to ask the owner and the owner should do something. If they don't do something, they're only hurting themselves on one hand. On the other hand, it's contributing to, it's a problem for everybody too, for that matter. So, we can have the fire department go board it up and charge them for the lien on the house. We tried to work with them first.
Yeah, I understand.
When we talked with them, they said they were making attempts to get the person that they didn't allow in and out.
Is there someone living in it now?
Yes, it's been vacant since last year. There's not been nobody living in it now. To my understanding, nobody's lived in it.
I haven't noticed anybody there. I've been by there.
We, like I say, we maintained the lawn all last year. There was no one in the home. And matter of fact, the door in the back is, you have access, it's wide open, I mean, you know, if you wanted to go through. But if there's someone staying, then I'm sure without permission, because it's probably not built this time. I don't even think there's utilities on it.
My point is that that's fine if they got to get them out, but we need to have some reasonable time limit before we just look like we're, whatever song they sing is we accept and then...
Okay, we'll follow up again and see if we can get a schedule.
And in terms of, in terms of the form or the format here, complaint closed, date Date completed in terms of, you know, received a letter and so forth. Or closed, meaning, I guess, I'm not sure what you're trying to tell us by those categories because date completed and had received a letter doesn't match to be, you know what I'm saying?
Well, we send a letter out and they have ten days to get back to us. We also know the date that we send it out and the date that we get the green card back, that we actually know that they've received the letter and that's when we start the ten days.
Right.
And then when it's closed out and they've completed whatever action we put in the letter, that's when we put in items closed.
Okay. Okay, so date completed is the office has completed its first step. And the other items here, property on Gaston and property, or no, property on Parrishell and property on, another property on Northeast Street. We don't have anything there as far as, well, the property on South Michigan doesn't have a date completed, any information in that. But I believe you that you've contacted them and all. So, and the same thing for the one on Northeast Street, we don't, similar kind of problem and there's a falling awning and so forth, broken windows and that kind of thing. But there's nothing here that says what steps you've taken or any action that's been completed on their side.
I had, I had asked Linda to work with Scott and Scott, Linda inspected those and reported back to Linda. I apologize, I...
So, we don't know?
I think the one on Northeast Street, the window that was broken has been boarded up.
Okay.
Is it Henderson East Northeast?
Yeah.
Then I just told Bruce, I dropped guys that live on Henderson, we have stuff as well. And that, they had a board up, but it's fallen out again and there's jagged glass.
There was a board up on his lower right window.
Yeah, it's laying on the ground now. It's been like that for a couple of weeks. But, and it's, there's jagged glass in it, it was kind of dangerous.
So, I guess if you...
Property on Barrishell's now had a broken window.
Still?
Yeah. We have here gutters hanging, but there's an actual broken window.
They've got the gutters down, they've taken that down, but I know Scott works with, has talked to him several times. He's usually here, so most of all others say contact Scott.
Okay, well, whatever follow up on that and I, it would be helpful, I think, to, even a month that we don't meet because we don't have a reason to have to meet, to send, just to keep sending this out electronically, it causes anything, to the board members that we can kind of keep up on a regular basis.
Has that not gone out the last two months?
I think it went out in February, but I don't know that it went out in March. I think we asked, how's it on February, if you did?
I'll try to send it out.
Anything else, members?
If I may, the property on Barrishell that's owned by Dave Bean, I did speak with Dave on an occasion and he has a couple potential buyers. He assures me that's looking at the property. He has got a sign in the yard now that's up for sale by owner hoping to promote the sale of that home. He has told me he has come to realize that the building itself or the home is, it's on beyond repair. And he had one gentleman show some interest and told him that after seeing inside of it, he was no longer interested, but there was a couple other parties that may still be interested in buying it and just, and he always wanted, he says, just enough money that whatever lots value that. So hopefully, he can get that out underneath his belt and they won't have to look at it anymore.
Yeah, that's big lot.
It is.
Just, just around that, ask a follow up question. The, I think it's directly behind it, it's like a thicket, is that part of that same lot?
And it's also his property and it could be cleaned up, maybe down.
Yeah, it needs to be.
There's a fence that runs through there and the land on the east side of that fence, the city currently maintains because there's utilities that runs through there. And we cut our side back to make it look, resemble, make it easier to be mowed and maintained. And I told, I even cut it, someone I was one involved in cut some up above the fence so that it would make his place look a little more appealing. So, and he said he was really grateful for that and he said he didn't get the gutter down and he said, I am aware of it now. Somebody had called him and told him that he had a broken window or you might have informed him as well.
I think Scott informed him.
So, maybe he'll get that taken care of soon.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else? The second item here is, I just wanted to bring you up to speed on the sign ordinance update or sign ordinance that we've been, we've spent a lot of time and energy on. It has gone to the city council, city council has given a hearing to it, we've asked for public input. And at the last meeting, we did do some pretty thorough line by line, not line by line, pretty thorough review in making some decisions about many of the things that we had put in, the questions and the council has agreed to or wants to continue with. There was a few technical corrections that needed to be made, three hundred formatting, just missing a word or a spelling, spelled correctly, but it was the wrong word rather than the word that we wanted there. But there were, there's two areas where, or a couple of areas where we're still doing some deliberation on. And I thought it might be worthwhile for you to, for us to ask you to think about those one more time and then we can get your thoughts. I'd be fresher on what your thoughts might be as well as Blake when we discuss the council meeting. When it really, and what the intent is, friends, is we really do hope to lay this aside and make, make a decision and it's, it's then effective soon, whatever is a reasonable implementation time. But the couple areas that are of, in discussion yet deal with primarily the areas in the back of the ordinance that deal with the chart. And as you know, what we've done there is we have size, number, so forth, you know, the varieties with regard to signage are a little bit different depending upon speed of the traffic, the number of lanes of traffic and so forth that we've put in here. And so, question comes, have we or are we maybe going beyond what would be prudent if we have some things such as the size of the wall signs? If you look at the size of the wall signs, we've got, there's a certain number that you could have on a wall. And then that varies with regard to the, again, speed zone and number of lanes and so forth. But in particular, there's the size of them, you'll notice begin, they begin at like one and a half times, one and a half times the square, the length, linear length of the wall would be the square footage of the sign. And if you go up then to another, move it up to B one and you're up to greater than two lanes in B two, you're up to one and three quarters, 1.75 times the length of the, of the wall. Forty to forty-five, you're up, you're up to two times and so forth. Question is, are those sizes too large in your estimation? And I think maybe it might be helpful, if Gary can give us, and maybe you all can too, to do this as well as me, maybe, give us some for examples, for instances of what that would be if we had a, you know, pick a typical length of a building that faces the street, you know, the length of that, fifty feet or a hundred feet? What would be then the size of that, that sign, wall sign that could be hanging on the wall at one and a half or a two or two and a quarter or two and a half? Can you give us some examples of that?
It's going to be dependent on the frontage of each individual, you know, I mean, sometime like where Blockbuster is at right now, or was, that space is being split into two. You've got Great Clips and somebody else, so, you know, but that's not even on roadway where you've got two lanes of traffic. That's interior and, you know, how much per square footage of local linear is too much? I don't, I don't know. Duty's in the eye of the holder.
Well, my, my question is, give us some sense of if you had a storefront that was sixty feet wide.
What was on, where was that? I don't know.
Yours on B two.
Okay, I got fifty foot of frontage across the showroom, I got another fifty foot of frontage across the new service drive. So, let's look at the showroom, fifty foot of, the showroom's basically fifty feet. At B two, 1.75.
You're at B two and you're, you have greater than two lanes there.
Yeah.
You have only two lanes there, aren't you?
Yeah, two.
Just two.
Okay, just two. So, that's one and a, B two is B one and a half.
Yes, that's not a good example because you've got the big, it just, I mean, if you look 1.75 with two lanes, then you get, you know, we got two, 2.25 and the old standard was 1.5 across the board.
Mm-hmm.
And so, we're creating some big signs.
And the question is, how big are they and is that?
Do you feel like you're selling, how do you look for your storefront? My new signage met the old standard.
Okay.
I didn't have to get a variance when they put the new signage up.
No, and the sign, we're not talking about sign out by the road. We're talking about this is a wall sign, yeah.
All by the Chevrolet, the logos, everything, that, the current standard.
Is that 1.5?
Yeah, that. When I brought it in Kathy, she laid everything out and I met the current standard with the new bow tie, the Chevrolet letters, everything, the way it went out.
So, it'd be one and a half times fifty, so it'd be seventy-five square feet?
Yeah.
Seventy-five square feet is...
You know, you look at...
Eight by nine, roughly, yes. Or whatever.
Yeah, but then each being individual letters, but you know, you get up to, if I was in a...
I'd down pass Harvest when you have four lanes, four lanes.
If I was going to do it there, I could go up, you know, a hundred square feet versus...
That'd be a ten by ten. Is that too big? That's the question.
From an advertising standpoint, I don't think that's bigger the better, but from a control standpoint, I think they're getting out of, I think it's, it's great if you're building signs, but it almost gets to the point where you think you're creating situations where, I didn't have to go bigger, I just did what General Motors mandated as far as the size of the letters, size of the bow tie. I couldn't change any of that if I wanted to because that's mandated by them. But if I could have had my control, I may have made everything twice as big, but would that be creating a situation where, you know, let's say you get out past four lanes, you're at the four lanes on the other side of the bypass. Doctor Ebersole's, Doctor Ebersole there.
I don't know how big his, we're talking about a wall sign.
An actual attached to the building.
Yeah.
Kevin, are you saying that state championship sign's too big?
It's inside too area long. Baseball shows up, send it up.
Where did these standards here come from? Are these national standards?
They came from a group...
Handout, whatever you want to call it.
Handout. Well, it wasn't just, it wasn't pretty out of thin air. It came from a group of people...
Right, does it say is it a national standard of some type for signs?
I'd have to go back and look. I think it was implied that it was a, a national group or a...
So, these are the same numbers that we had that night when they...
Exactly, exactly.
Attorney from Cincinnati.
Nothing changed.
That's all, that's all, yeah, it's all the same.
Yeah, and just to tell you, so where the actual language in the ordinance that you're looking at came from is Sean sent a Excel spreadsheet that was denoted as being an amalgamation of various city ordinances and the National Traffic Safety Organization. It was all in Excel. I reformatted it into a Word document, added it to here and tried to keep it as close to, the, the actual numbers are identical to that. I tried to keep the rest of it as close to it as I could with the size and space.
And that was stuff, stuff he, besides those stuff he got from the other cities, a lot of that came from that highway institute in Pennsylvania is where these numbers were moved up in the National Highway Initiative.
So, I mean, it's not created out of, I mean, based on some studies of engineering, traffic studies of some kind in terms of trying to give visibility as well as allowing people to read and understand what they have to read and understand in order to be relatively safe and possible, right?
So, what we're getting to is, do we want to go off that chart or do we want to come up with the chart of our own, correct?
Yeah, or, you know, I guess the consensus was at one point here is that we would go with the chart. So, that's, that's where it lay. If we do something different than that substantively, I mean, then I think we're going back to square one. Tweaking the chart, I think, is, I guess, more than what I'm having in mind and I'm wondering what would be, if, if you think that these signs are getting too large and I don't know what, you know, a ten by ten may be too large or, and that may be the wrong maybe, it's, it's a five by twenty, twenty feet long and five feet high.
We don't dictate the shape of the...
No, no, we can't, no, it's, so it'd more likely be a, you know, a five by twenty and not a ten by ten in terms of, and depending on what you put on it, if it's a hundred feet long, if your building's a hundred feet long and you've got twenty feet of it is used in a sign space, is that too much? I guess is the question. Or, one part of the question, there's one question to be asked.
The one to look at would be American Rental. They just replaced their channelers and that's as big as you can go on that space that they've got out there behind...
So, it's just under the 1.5 standard?
Yes, it's right at the 1.5 standard. And it takes up, well, I think in ours right now, it's twenty-five or thirty percent of the fascia area of the storefront. So, you take the whole storefront area and it's like twenty-five percent. And that takes up every bit of the space across the front of that.
And how big, how wide, this is based on linear feet, right?
Our current is based on the square footage of the facade.
But what we're talking here is linear feet, correct?
Do you remember what the linear footage is of that building?
It might have been eighteen or something like, I mean, it's a small space, eighteen
Other thoughts? Back when we were doing all this, my thought just was that somebody had already done the math, that get paid to study signs and speeds and have a lot of data input from at least the eastern part of the United States. I just decided, I just thought, who am I to decide that that's not right? It seems, you know, somebody got paid to figure all this out. And don't second, I don't know, I just don't second guess unless we have a problem. And maybe down the road, you end up tweaking it because you go, man, that's real stupid.
Well, and then that's part of the problem and then we've got no respect with the problem because we can't take it back, those that already have it.
No, no.
I think we were sold on safety, so we went with the numbers because we were sold on safety. So, now we're thinking through it out loud as opposed to having it fresh in our mind and have it drilled into us that this is because of safety. We're now taking a deeper look and maybe, I don't have it, I don't have an idea on numbers either, I'm not a sign expert, but at the same time, I guess it's probably the discussion that we need to have.
Yeah, that's what I brought it up.
So, what number is correct? I mean, that's...
Well, I think Roy's got a point. I think part of this is a safety matter. I think what ninety, probably seventy-five percent of what's here, we're not going to utilize because we don't have speed limits of forty and forty-five. Only place we got greater than two, that's forty, up to forty-five miles an hour is out on the new section that goes there. We don't have a, as far as I know, fifty to fifty-five miles an hour or the interstate. Most of the stuff we've got is between thirty and thirty-five and two lanes. That's, that's where we're going to be at most of the time. And the same thing goes for the I, the I ones and the I twos and so forth. My, part of me also says that we're making it pretty complex. The chart looks a little complex. My thought... My thought is maybe we don't have, you know, two, one point seven five, two point oh, two point two five, two point five oh. I think we can find a happy medium in there. Get a little bit larger size for higher speeds, more traffic lanes. That does, I think, know safety to a certain extent. And find the right, the right number there that would work in most instances and not have four or five different numbers, maybe two or three at the most. I don't know if that makes sense to you all, but I'd be willing to try and find a way to find a a happy, acceptable number there for that. Is that something that seems reasonable to you all, or you wanted to stay with what we've got?
Did I make a point, like?
Yes.
You've got two signs that are normally allowed. You've got your site identification sign, which is really your safety issue because that's the one that's closest to the road, which is going to identify where you need to turn in. So what's identifying the building within a center or within a site is a separate sign that might not need to meet all of those things that you might be thinking about for safety because you've got the opportunity for two signs. So whether you go bigger on the building, whether it's one point five, one point seven five, I don't know that when you get up to two and two and a half, that gets pretty big, but... When, I think Roy will agree with me, when we looked at several surrounding communities, when we looked at what you guys took on originally, which we decided to not change when we submitted our draft out of that first committee to the plan permission, any sizes, heights, square footages, numbers, and we left all that alone and just were working on wordsmithing so it was not subject to multiple interpretations, one person interpreting one way, one interpreting it another. So we did go through six or eight?
Maybe eight, maybe as many as eight different ordinances from surrounding communities. Some very close, Shelbyville, Columbus, some a little further away, just to see what different people had done. And like Gary said, originally, we didn't change anything on the sizes.
Right.
But then it was brought up to some of the safety things that we received that, you know, we were, maybe we were wrong on some of that.
Well, and it's, we're just looking at options here.
Some of it's the design of the sign. I agree, you need bigger letters if you're going faster. It doesn't mean you need necessarily a bigger canvas to put that message on.
Okay, another question that has come, is there any more thoughts on this topic? Bruce?
No.
Kevin?
No.
I don't mean to cut off, I really, I'm starting to move on, but I really shouldn't have. I haven't heard from everybody, so if you've got something to say, let's, I do want to hear it. I don't like what you do too.
Oh, fine.
Well, I'd like to hear yours, Kevin. I mean, so you put the sign up in conjunction with this ordinance, the current ordinance?
We got one point, I got one point five written there. And I'm assuming that one point five would be what would be close to be equivalent to our twenty, current twenty, or whatever percentage it is. You know, and Gary's got a very valid point. You think that this is the wall sign, what they're going to be seeing when they run down this two lane road at thirty or four thirty to thirty-five or forty to forty-five, or they're going to be looking at the sign out front off the interstate or off the road, you know? That's the sign you're going to see, then once they pull inside them, won't they?
It depends on where it is. If it's in the shopping center, you're exactly right. If it's, if it's going down the road and they see, oh, that's where Sibbits is, they may not notice your, they may not notice your street sign. They're going to see the, yeah, but I mean, my point is, they're probably, it could be either or. In some, depending on where you're at, if you're in a shopping center or in an area where there's multiple shops and stores and things, yeah, they're probably looking more for the entrance to that parking space than they are the building itself, so. And I think part of it is, in the industrial piece, they're looking at, you know, identifying the factory or whatever it might be. Anything further? Roy, anything more? Blake?
Are these all consistent? I mean, this came from the whole study.
Yes.
The only thing I say is if we're going to stay consistent with this, why not keep the rest of the study the same? I mean, that we were consistent through the whole study rather than just take piece meal, piece meal.
Okay. Well, I think we've got some good food for thought, right Blake? Take back to the council. Another question has come, has come up. If you look at the freestanding signs on a multi-lot use, we've got, you know, the number of signs you can have, maximum square footage, again, increases with the size of the roadway as well as the speed and heights, some adjustment there. The bigger concern came up with the number of sign panels allowed in that sign, that pole sign or freestanding sign that's sitting there. And there we have limited the number between four, five, or up to high-speed six. Question is, we have not done that before. There, if you look at the sign out by, on the bypass, again, it's a forty-five mile an hour area. You've got a couple of shopping centers there, some businesses along the way there that could have wall signs and so forth. The shopping center where the old Walmart Shopping Center, Kmart area there has a pole sign or, and it has, I don't know, six or eight or ten different signs on that. Or how many, whatever, how many, they're a large number. So the question is, do we just determine the maximum square footage, maximum height, the number, and if they want to put a hundred and fifty on there, or fifteen, or two, it's up to them.
But not only you, and you would consider that having one public street front, right?
And in the ordinance, if you go, if you go beyond seven hundred, I think, feet, or seven fifty, one of the two, you could have a second sign. So depending on the length you've got, you could have one sign for one area of shops, another sign with another set on there if it was over seven hundred.
You have a five panel, you have three signs for that one.
Please?
If you don't have to buy panels, you have to have three signs for that particular wall.
Well, we would have, if the, if the length of the, of that space is fifteen hundred feet, yeah. Or more than that, twenty-one hundred feet. If it's fifteen hundred feet, there'd be two signs there. Up to two signs with...
With five on it.
Five on each, on each panel.
Yeah, frontage is there.
I don't know how many comes around, but even up where the BP station is and subway is, that's got more than five on that one right there, and that's not seven hundred feet.
No.
So I've worked with a lot of sign ordinances in a former life. I've never seen one that, unless it's a number of ten panels.
It is. What's your thoughts on that?
My thought was that if you needed more, you could always go to the BZA and ask for a variance.
Less we want to avoid.
But you got, but now this is someone that's going to have a business. The person that built this place where these shops are going to be, they're, it's not like we're asking each individual to come in. Each individual that rents a space is not going to come in. It's the corporation that builds the large...
I know.
Well, they're used to dealing with BZA. I mean, you're not going to be...
No, I'm not worried, I'm not, no, I don't want to kind of, I'm not, I wasn't suggesting that we don't want them to have to come. I don't mind if they have to come. But what we're trying to avoid is always getting around the ordinance. Except for those occasions when there's a real serious need or problem, the BZA should always have a default position of no because they ought to uphold the ordinance unless there's a darn good reason that there has to be a change. And what we're setting up here, hopefully this would be the standard unless there's a serious or significant... So if we're not, if we don't have it right now, we better get it right, is what my point is.
I don't know, it just seems to me that if, if, it's hard to picture putting that many businesses in that restrictive of space. I mean, I suppose it could happen to where they wouldn't have the frontage to get the necessary signs for the businesses that they are inviting into their rental property. I mean, maybe it happens, it just doesn't seem to me that that would be a problem. I mean, maybe I'm wrong, I mean, I'm not into the sign business, so.
Tom? Thoughts, Kevin?
I think if you already have a number of instances here where those aren't held, it's kind of tough to make them go back and change it. But then you still got all those examples out there. You say, anybody new, you can only have six or five or whatever.
Yeah, I remember it.
You know, I don't know, I see both sides, I don't know, but... I don't like to put a whole lot of things out there where you already know you're violation of it.
Yeah.
As a business person, I don't know, you guys are in business like that. I mean, do you see it as a problem if you have more than six on one of those signs? It's tough to read it when you're running by, as you're driving by.
Well, it doesn't do anything, I'll tell you that.
How much frontage do they have? Nope. See, I don't know how long that is if you go all the way from...
Are you going to make them go back and put it on two?
No, 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 nothing, nothing's going to change what's is. It's only going forward and the question is, you know, what's...
Do you want to limit the number of panels? Because before we took the total, it was the total square footage of the sign, right?
Right, and they, and they, the manager gets what they want, then the V shops. They split it up between how many spaces that they think they can demise those into. And sometimes there, you don't see them on there because somebody took two spaces. There are normally sixteen or twenty-foot bays that you go down when you divide the V shops up. So somebody may take a forty-foot storefront and only take one sign panel. I just don't, I don't see a reason to limit it.
I can see that, the number of, you're talking about the number of panels rather than the square, leaving the square footage...
Leave the square footage there, let them divide it how they need to divide. That's mine.
That's probably the best thing. It makes sense.
Because that way they could, the size of the space could get the larger sign than the small. You know what I'm saying? That's the only salad like that.
Yeah, well, they'll sell it any number of different ways, that's for sure.
Forty thousand square foot, you get a bigger sign than the guy who's got a tent on it.
Right.
Yeah, that makes perfect sense to just take that, to me, to just take the panels out and leave the square footage alone and let the guy figure it out.
Any other thoughts, Bruce? No? Okay, well, thank you, gentlemen. I think those are the primary areas that I wanted to pitch your counsel on. Is there anything else that you, after having looked through it again, or if you took time to read through it very far, that you noticed that you wanted to ask about or clarification of?
And I know it's on, again, I don't know if this is final or not, but on page eighteen of the one...
Yeah?
The sign should be located at ten foot off the property, and I think written when we had like one foot.
Which?
Page eighteen of the draft that you just sent us.
C.
Up midway in the page.
Projecting, am I missing? Give me your, your site, your code site.
E C?
E Business.
Yeah, it's a one five five oh seven four E, uh, C is where you circle.
E C, all right, yeah, that's... Yeah, I think, I think that probably does need to be changed, I must have missed that. You see that, Chris?
I do, yeah, I'm going to look into it.
Yeah, thanks.
Change that.
Thanks, John.
Same thing with Sean is here, he proposed that we do that sort of distance there by one foot from the parking lot. And we all took that, he had a good recommendation, that way you know, try to measure that distance out of the company. He said this, but as for a safe guard, he proposed that.
Yeah, I think it was, right, right, one foot back, right.
That would be consistent, I think.
Yeah, that was, that's where, we just didn't catch that. Okay, long discussion, but profitable, helpful, thank you. Two other items here, I don't know how long it'll take, but we've got time. Automatic pool covers, Gary, you wanted to bring to our attention?
We've had some people from Columbus come, want to put in automatic pool covers on some pools and have asked if we still require a fence. Our ordinance does require a fence, and our ordinance is allowed to be more strict than the state law. But state law has been revised within the past twelve months to allow for automatic pool covers without fences. I didn't know if the, since it's in the zoning code, I didn't know if you guys wanted to consider revising that section of the zoning ordinance to allow for automatic pool covers without fences or not. It's, it's just that somebody told me they had three or four of them sold here and when they came in to try to get permits, we said, no, our ordinance right now says you have to have a fence.
And I, Kenny, if I elaborate on, after Gary's conversation with them, I was contacted by council for representing some of these pool builders. And he has, you know, proposed to me an ordinance that is similar to the current state ordinance regarding automatic pool covers versus fences. And my recommendation would be if the commission is so inclined to allow, you know, further discussion on that that we suggest to him that he submit it as a proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance, which would first have to come to this body, then go to the city council, per India statute.
Well, obviously it was a safety issue with the reason for the fences and the pools. These are new pools or these are pools that are being refurbished that already have a fence around them.
I believe they were new pools.
New pools.
But even if, but even if you wanted to put one on, I mean, they still do pond water in them. I mean, they, they still present drowning hazards for small children.
It's an limitation too, where you don't have a fence inviting people to your property where they're not necessarily have permission to be in there, you know? And that's the old idea of putting the fence up is not just for privacy, but to keep uninvited people out of your pool.
Problem with pool cover too is, even if it's automatic, it doesn't have to be on. Meaning you can easily go in the house and leave it off and a small kid in the neighborhood wandering in your yard.
I mean, they're about playing ball in the neighborhood and the ball goes over and lands on top of the pool. A young child out there playing, say adult walks in, it's inviting him to go in and get, oh, I can just walk out there and get that ball.
You walk out there and it's not real stable.
Yeah.
They can walk on it. I, they front it up.
My suggestion would be in the city that we can take the, the call for a fence. If it's in a county, that's a whole different, you know, rule, but I would not, I'm not in favor of just allowing for... If it's in a county, that's a whole different, you know, rule, but I would not, I'm not in favor of just allowing for a pool cover as opposed to a fence. It puts too much responsibility on the homeowner when you have an issue. Yeah, I'm not saying that the homeowner should take the responsibility, I'm saying I don't.
He's inviting more trouble.
Yeah.
Other comments? Kevin, you got any thoughts?
I agree with Blake. There's, there's too much risk. And as, as a homeowner, if I spent one in, I wouldn't even want that risk.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't either, right?
I've got one. I've got, I've got a fence around it. I mean, locked fence.
Yeah. John?
I agree. I mean, some insurance companies will let you get away with a cover if it's a certified one and it'll insure you. But if a lot of them won't even do that.
There was a fence anyway.
Yeah.
So, so you nodding here before too?
Yes, I, I agree. Blake, I would say totally. In times past, you had a pool with an automatic cover. We had a gate around it just for that reason that, like you say, there's nothing keeps you to have the cover on just because you went in the house and ate lunch. Like Tony said, you go to the house and eat lunch, you leave it off. Somebody, a little kid throws his ball in your yard and he's, you know, the pool's right there.
You know, there's, there's got to be a lot of safety things for pool cover. I mean, if the power goes down, you got to have a backup system or something gets clogged. I mean, it's, it's, it's not a good deal.
Well, it sounds like the sense is pretty strong here that we're going to complete what we want. And if you want to convey that back to the attorney that we've, you know, I mean, it's not to say that if he wanted to or somebody wanted to bring it to the council itself for considerations and ordinance, but, I mean.
It's possible.
Not recommending it.
Well, yeah, I will.
The commission is pretty well solidly saying we'd like what we have.